I pledge the flag to the United States of America. The Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sunshine Notice, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' public meeting agenda for Tuesday, October 15, 2024. The time is now 7:06. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, notice that this meeting was published in the December 7, 2023, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board, and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's office. Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Tucci.
Here.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Here.
Commissioner Petracca.
Here.
Mayor Kelly.
President.
Old President Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Minutes?
Yes, we have Board of Commissioner meeting minutes for September 20, uh, September 17, 2024, and September 20th, 2024.
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Uh, Communications?
Thank you, Mayor. The Nutley Chamber of Commerce has submitted an event application to host the 62nd Annual Santa's Arrival at the Nutley Park Oval on Friday, November 29, from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM with a rain date of November 30, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. The Nutley Chamber has also submitted an event application for the 25th Annual Nutley 5K Run and Walk, scheduled for Sunday, May 4, 2025, from 8:00 AM to 10:45, starting and finishing at the Nutley High School Park Oval. And our last communication is from Mayor Kelly's office. He has submitted an event application to hold a township's Christmas tree lighting on Sunday, December 8, 2024, from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM on Chestnut Street between Franklin Ave. and Park Drive. Motion, please.
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
And that's it for Communications, Mayor.
And I'm gonna take the agenda a little out of order. Uh, we have a proclamation on for this evening, uh, for the Friends of the Library Week. And, uh, I'm gonna read that on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners. Whereas Friends of the Nutley Public Ri- Library raise money that enables our library to move from good to great, providing the resources for additional programming, much-needed equipment, supporting for children, youth, and adult summer reading, and special events throughout the years. Whereas the Friends' support of the 2024 Summer Reading Program resulted in 833 children registered for the Summer Reading Program, and a total of 20,525 books read, 101 teens registered, and 889 books read, and 144 adults registered, and 1,310 books read. Whereas the work of the Friends highlights on an ongoing basis the fact that our library is the cornerstone of the community, providing opportunities for all to engage in the joy of lifelong learning and connect with the thoughts and ideas of others from ages past to the present. Whereas the Friends understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and advocate to ensure that our library gets the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, including access to print and electronic materials, along with expert assistance in research, readers, advisory, and children's services. Whereas the Friends' gift of their time and commitment to the library sets an example for all in how volunteerism leads to positive civic engagement and the betterment of our community. Now therefore be resolved as the Board of Commissioners and Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey proclaims October 20 tw- October 20 to 26, 2024, as Friends of the Libraries Week, and urge everyone to join Friends of the Library and thank them for all that they do to make our library and community so much better. Does anyone from the Friends of the Library want to speak on their behalf, or do you guys all just want to come up for a picture and get out of here?
Hi, I'm Dorothy, the President of the Friends. Thanks for this opportunity. I became Friends in June, President of the Friends in June 2022, and it's been a fun journey. Um, we have a great website now, and we're spreading the word about Friends. We were recently honored by Proponent Credit Union with a grant which will be put to good use. Our membership is passionate about helping the library and the community, and our volunteers are amazing. We just finished a very successful book sale, which is well-loved by the community, and we've started a new tradition with our first author book fair, where we invited Nutley authors to meet and greet. Who knew we had so many authors in Nutley? Next time you come to the library, please check out our new hydration station with a convenient bottle filler. Thanks again.
Thank you, and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
You guys are welcome to stay for the whole meeting if you want. Okay, picking up where we left off, uh, we have a discussion on the 2024 Best Practices Inventory by Commissioner Evans.
Yes, a short discussion.
Excellent.
You know, every year we are required to complete a, uh, best practices, uh, survey, uh, that's issued by the Department of, uh, Community Affairs. Uh, and every year we're subject to completeness to determine whether or not we are eligible to receive 100% of our aid that the state gives us. So, uh, every year we pass, uh, and, and this year is no different. Uh, you have to get at least 35, a score of 35, uh, on the, on the inventory checklist, and our score was 41 and a half. So we're well above the average. Uh, basically, it says we get our 100% of the aid that we get each year. So, uh, well done to my team for what they do and making sure that we comply, uh, with the state's requirements, and that we, and it actually changes every year and it updates. So they do follow up to see if we did implement something, are we following through on it? If we need to implement something, did we implement it? So it's, it's a constant, uh, environment of continuous improvement. So, uh, thank you, Mayor. That's all I had to say about it.
Thank you, and thank you to your team for getting us all our aid that we can get. Helps keep our, our taxes down. Uh, moving to reports, Commissioner Petracca. Thank you. Bills, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Bill is for October 15, 2024. Public Affairs, $107,969.84. Revenue and Finance, $2,930,748.84. Public Safety, $48,927.45. Public Works, $45,965.46. Parks and Public Property, $169,233.90. Water and Sewer Utility, $1,133,596.84. Payroll as of Friday, October 11, 2024, regular payroll total, Overtime payroll total, $67,020.21. Total payroll, $1,022,77.29. For a grand total of $5,458,519.62.
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
That's it for, for bills, Mayor.
Uh, we have public comment on agenda items only. This is public comment on agenda items only. Those wishing to be heard approach the microphone and state your name for the record, please. Seeing none, Board of Commissioner announcements. Commissioner Evans?
Uh, nothing for me this evening.
Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, I, unfortunately, I, I was out of town for, uh, this year's Columbus State Parade. I think it's the first one I've missed in 25 years. Uh, but I just want to wish everyone a happy belated Columbus Day. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Scarpelli?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the farmer's market's entering its, uh, last couple of weeks. I just want to thank everybody on the Board of Commissioners for your support, uh, making that, uh, market happen, and, uh, invite people to come on out for the next couple of weeks and support our farmers and our vendors at the Nutley Farmers Market.
Commissioner Petracca?
Yes, first I'd just like to say that we had fire prevention last Friday night, and, um, appreciate you coming, Mayor, and as you, you know, it was packed to the walls, and it's really like a tribute to what we do here in Nutley for the kids. And also I talked to Commissioner Tucci privately about this last week. So I grew up on Park Avenue, and sometimes I'd go see my father, and one night I was coming home around 8 o'clock. And to see all these fields light up and a million kids playing, it is astonishing to me, and it's not one night, it's every night. So I just want to compliment Commissioner Frank, you know, you do a good job, I always tell you that, but, you know, Nutley is really a special place, and it's, we're all about the kids, and my hat's off to, to, to all of you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And, uh, we, we had a number of, of events in the past two weeks culminating with our Columbus State Parade, as Commissioner Tucci mentioned. It was a beautiful day for parade, beautiful, uh, beautiful parade, uh, put on by the Nutley Bell, Columbus State Parade Committee, so congratulations to them. Uh, this weekend, we do have, in conjunction with the, the farmer's market, a pa- pause in the, the park event. It's gonna be pause in the parking lot, uh, because that's where we have our farmer's market. Uh, but if, you're invited to bring your, your, your pets, your frie- your furry friends, and bring them, there'll be vendors, uh, specifically tailored towards, uh, your pets. Uh, and we'll have, uh, several o- other upcoming events. Be sure to check your, uh, calendars and check the, uh, the email blasts for additional information regarding that. Uh, moving on to, uh, ordinance introductions, Commissioner Petracca?
Yes, Mayor, I have ordinance number, let's see here. Ordinance number 3568, ordinance to amend an ordinance codified in the Code of Township of Nutley, Chapter 22A, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, particularly Article 7, Special Zones and Areas, Section 29A, entitled Handicap Parking. To add to the location set forth, this one is for 63 Spring Garden. I move that this ordinance be passed into a second reading and advertised in Nutley Sun, together with the notice required by law, and that the further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held on the second reading on, what is it? November 19th. I mo- I move it?
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Okay, I have one more. Um, this is 3569, um, an ordinance to amend the ordinance codified in the sec- in the Code of Office Township of Nutley, Chapter 22A, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, particularly Article 7, Section 29, entitled Handicap Parking, to add the location set forth, um, 76 Elm Place. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertising Nutley Sun, together with the notice required by law, and the further consideration of the said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at the second reading on November 19th. I move it.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye. Thank you, Mayor.
And we don't have any more ordinances for introduction and none on, uh, public hearing. Moving on to resolutions, Commissioner Evans?
Thank you. Uh, Resolution Number 70, 27324. This resolution appoints Stephanie Santana to the position of Chief Financial Officer. Whereas NJSA 48 colon 9 dash 140 dot 10 requires every municipality in the state of New Jersey to have a chief financial officer to be appointed by the Director of Revenue and Finance, and whereas the Director of Revenue and Finance has determined that Stephanie Santana, who is a certified municipal finance officer in the state of New Jersey, has the qualifications and experience to hold the position and perform the duties of Chief Financial Officer, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley is desirous of supporting this recommendation, and Ms. Santana has agreed to serve in said position commencing on, uh, January 1, 2024. Now therefore be it resolved, uh, by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, we do hereby appoint Stephanie to the position of Chief Financial Officer of the Township for the initial four-year term commencing January 1, 2024. Be it further resolved that for tenure purposes, Ms. Santana's initial term, uh, of office, uh, is, uh, will commence on January, uh, uh, 1, 2024. Uh, I want him, just a slight correction in here. Uh, Stephanie, uh, joined us, uh, later, or later in the spring, or, um, around March timeframe. Uh, and she passed her, uh, exam for the CMFO in August. So she's qualified to sit in the position. Uh, she meets all of the requirements, and I'm satisfied she does. The change here, though, is, is that, um, she, uh, commenced in the position in March, in the acting role. Uh, we're now converting it to the permanent role. By statute, tenure timeline begins on January 1. So while she wasn't here, the timeline is January 1. So I just want to make that clarification from this resolution. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Congratulations, Ms. Santana. Aye.
Thank you. Uh, the next three resolutions, 284, 24, 285, 24, and 286, 24, all relate to, uh, cooperative purchasing, uh, uh, organizations in the state of New Jersey. And the purpose is that we enter into these all the time, uh, to, uh, enable us to, uh, efficiently and efficiently buy goods and services, uh, under what is known as state contract. Uh, so the state's already done the bidding process for us. This enables us to take advantage of the scale of the pricing, uh, that occurs at the state, county, uh, and, uh, and departmental levels. So, uh, 284, uh, authorizes the township to enter into a contract with U.S. Communities Government Purchasing Alliance, the National Joint Powers Alliance, the Keystone Purchasing Network, and H, uh, GAC by vendors pursuant to the provisions of, of NJSA 48 colon 11 dash 1. Uh, 285 authorizes the township to enter into a contract with Essex County's Purchasing Program, pursuant to the same, uh, statutory, uh, administrative statute. Uh, 286 authorized the township to enter into a contract with the State of New Jersey Cooperative Purchasing Program, pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 11A 11 dash 12A and NJAC, uh, 5 colon 34 dash 729. Uh, now therefore the Township of Nutley authorizes the purchasing agents to purchase goods and services from these approved cooperating, cooperative purchasing vendors pursuant to all conditions of the individual contracts for the year, uh, 2025, beginning on January 1, 2025, through December 31st, 2025. So move all three ordinances.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Too many resolutions. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Uh, my next resolution, 28724, uh, designates a, uh, public agency compliance officer. Uh, this is an actual valid position in the state of New Jersey, however, uh, in Nutley, we, uh, don't hire someone to do this because, uh, cost of hiring an employee is very, very expensive, but we do, uh, provide a stipend, uh, to an individual who is qualified to actually execute these duties. Uh, so in accordance with NJAC 17, uh, colon 273 dot 2, uh, the Paco, uh, for the Township of Nutley, uh, is, will be, uh, Eleni Pettis, our municipal clerk, who has served in this position for the last several years, and she'll continue to do that for 2025. Uh, be it further resolved that the Township Clerk is authorized and directed to forward a certified copy of this resolution to the State of New Jersey Department of the Treasury, Division of Contracts and Compliance, and EEO and Affirmative Action in Public Contracts, uh, P.O. Box 209 Trent, New Jersey. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
My next resolution is, uh, authorizes the township to establish a petty cash account for 2025 in the amount of $650. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Uh, 2, 28924, whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to acquire the services of a registered municipal accountant to conduct an annual audit of the township's books, accounts, and financial transactions, inclusive of the Nutley Public Library, within five months after the close of fiscal year in a non-fair and open, uh, contract pursuant to provisions of NJSA, uh, 19 colon 44A and, uh, dash 20 dot 5. And whereas the Chief Financial Officer has determined and certified in writing that the value of the contract is, will exceed $30,000, it is anticipated that the contract will run for 12 months, beginning January 1, 2025, through December, uh, 31st, 2025. Nizavachi LLP, Certified Public Accounts and Consultants, 200 Valley Road, Suite 300, Mount Arlington, New Jersey, has submitted a fee schedule totaling $175,000 for providing such services. And whereas, uh, Nizavachi LLP has completed the, and submitted a business entity disclosure certification, which certifies that they have not made any disqualifying reportable contributions to a political or candidate committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous one year, and that the contract will prohibit them from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract. Whereas funds will be available from account 501222, uh, 205, in the amount of $97,000, and, uh, account 505706205, in the amount of $78,000, and will be certified by the Chief Financial Officer su- subject to the adoption of the 2025 municipal budget. Now therefore be resolved by the, uh, Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, uh, authorizes the mayor to enter into a contract with Nizavachi LLP, uh, to provide the above services, and further resolve that the, and business entity disclosure certification and determination of value be placed on file with this resolution. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
My next, uh, uh, resolution, 20, uh, 290 dash 24, uh, provides for, uh, the need for legal services related to, uh, addressing our affordable housing obligation, uh, in, in the township. Uh, this is a recurring resolution, a recurring need in the town. Uh, uh, the, uh, funds are fully paid for out of the COA trust account, uh, T, uh, 26909902, and that has been certified by the Chief Financial Officer. And whereas, uh, Inglisino, uh, John P. Inglisino of Inglisino Taylor has completed and submitted the business entity disclosure certification, which certifies, uh, that he and, and the firm have not made any disqualifying reportable contributions to a political or candidate committee in the township in the pre- previous one year that would violate NJSA 19 colon 44A dash 20 dot 5, uh, and related disclosures. Now therefore, uh, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley in accordance with public contract law, do hereby authorize the mayor and the clerk to execute and seal and deliver a contract with John Inglisino, uh, of the firm of Inglisino Taylor pursuant to the provisions of, uh, 1940, 19 colon 44A, 20 dot 5, for an amount not to exceed $15,000. Uh, be it further resolved that the copy of this resolution will be published as required by law. Uh, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
My next resolution is a resolution of the Township, uh, uh, which is on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. Uh, it's for Township Council concerning compliance and procedural, as well as general legal issues specifically related to matters of open public meetings and, uh, uh, Open Public Records Acts of the state of New Jersey. This is an area that has been growing in complexity, uh, uh, through the years. Uh, the township, when it comes to, uh, uh, Open Public Records Act notifications, receives generally, uh, by, on an annual basis, some 700 individual requests. Within those requests, there are multiple actions required, requests for information, and multiple documents. So, uh, one request with multiple questions, where requesting multiple documents, uh, actually turns into thousands of documents, pages that have to be reviewed and screened to make sure that we are compliant with the law, uh, for the township, and that requires someone with special knowledge, uh, to do that. Uh, and every year we use, uh, Inglisino's, Inglisino Taylor, and specifically, uh, Justin Marqueta, who has done a, a great job, uh, doing that. So, uh, funds are available for this purpose in account 501, um, uh, 02205, subject to the adoption of the, uh, 25 municipal budget. Uh, there's a typo in, in the resolution, uh, and that the, the firm has, uh, made all of the required bids to send these disclosures. Uh, the amount of the contract is for $75,000. Uh, and, uh, then it will begin January 1, 2025, through December 31st, 2025, and we, we will follow the required disclosures as listed in the resolution. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Uh, my next resolution is, is again, is a compliance resolution with, uh, NW Financial, uh, which actually has to do a compliance review to make sure that the township is compliant with the Security Exchange Act's requirements regarding our outstanding debt. Uh, uh, and, uh, NW Financial does this for us every year. Uh, it costs 1,500 bucks, uh, and will be provided for in our, uh, 2025 budget in account 501208205. Uh, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners. The mayor and the township clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute an agreement with NW Financial Group, uh, to Hudson Place Hoboken, for services of a professional financial audit on the total amount of $1,500. The contract is ordered without competitive bidding as a professional service in accordance with NJSA 40A 11 dash 5 dash 1A. Uh, notice that this action shall be printed in Nutley Sun, the legal newspaper of the Township of Nutley. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Okay, and last but not least, uh, the treasurer is authorized to provide refunds of overpayment of property taxes in the amount of $1,946 for the lot blocks listed in the resolution. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, thank you. Whereas a resolution was adopted on December 19, 2023, awarding a contract to Awarding a contract to Trees Plus Inc., forty bunker road east Hanover, New Jersey. And whereas the agreement entered into on the bid specifications between Trees Plus and Township of Nutley. Was for a period of one year with the option to be extended, not to exceed two years. Whereas funds are available from five dash zero one, five, twelve, two oh five pending adoption of the twenty twenty five municipal budget. Not to exceed forty thousand dollars for the year and have been certified by the chief financial officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the township of Nutley renewed the contract with Trees Plus. Of East Hanover for the for tree removal services pursuant to the previously signed agreement. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco.
Hi.
Mayor Kelly.
Hi.
Whereas Township of Nutley has a need to acquire specialized professional services as a fair and open contract pursuant to the provision of NJ SA nineteen colon forty four A twenty point five. And whereas the request for qualifications for insurance accident and safety review board meetings were received on September twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, and whereas C Walter Searle. Insurance Agency LLC, um also known as World Insurance Associates LLC, four ten Franklin Avenue, Nutley. Has provided these services in the past at the Township of Nutley and is particularly suited to provide continued service. And whereas the term of this contract is for a one-year period commencing on January one, twenty twenty five. And continuing through December thirty first, twenty twenty five, with the option to extend for one additional year, and whereas funds are available from account. Five days zero one, five sixteen, two forty five, in the amount of ten thousand dollars and have been certified by the chief financial officer. Subject to the adoption of the twenty twenty five municipal budget, said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be it resolved. By the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that a contract be awarded to C Walter Searle Insurance Agency LLC as described herein. The responsory RFQ shall be placed on file with this resolution. And a notice of this action shall be printed once in the Nutley Sun in accordance to local public contract law. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco.
Hi.
Mayor Kelly.
Hi.
Whereas township has a need to acquire specialized professional services for consulting and risk manager for the Township of Nutley. To a fair and open process pursuant to NJ SA nineteen colon forty four A dash twenty point five. And whereas the RFQs for consultant and risk manager received and opened on September twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. Whereas C Walter, C Walter Searle Insurance Agency LLC, four ten Franklin Avenue is particularly suited to provide continued service, and whereas a contract. For professional risk management consulting services required in the bylaws of the suburban metro joint insurance fund, this contract shall not exceed fifty thousand dollars per year. For twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six, and the funds are available from the suburban metro joint insurance fund. Now therefore be it resolved. That the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey. Authorizes a contract to be entered into with C Walter Searle Insurance Agency as described herein. Be it further resolved that the response to the RFQ for consultant and risk manager be placed on file with this resolution. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco.
Hi.
Mayor Kelly.
Hi.
Whereas township has a need to acquire specialized professional services as a fair and open contract pursuant to the provision of NJ SA nineteen colon forty four A twenty point five. And whereas Department of Parks and Public Property has determined that there is a need to acquire specialized professional services for air conditioning, heating, and refrigeration services. And purchase of equipment, and whereas the municipal clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for sealed bids. For air conditioning, heating, refrigeration services, and purchase of equipment. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey. That sealed bid should be due on Thursday, November seventh, twenty twenty four, at eleven AM prevailing time. Addressing municipal clerk, Nutley Township Hall, One Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey, at which time they will be publicly open and read. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco. Mayor Kelly.
Hi.
Whereas the resolution was adopted on November twenty ninth, twenty twenty three, awarding a contract to Montillo Electric. Uh thirty one twenty nine Ridge Road, Lynnhurst, New Jersey, and whereas the agreement entered into. The bid specifications between Montillo Electric and the Township of Nutley on November twenty nine, twenty three was for a period of one year with the option to be extended. For an additional year, not to exceed two years total, and whereas funds are available from account number five, there's zero one, five away, two hundred, in the amount of ten thousand dollars. And G there's zero four, one eighty six, four oh one, in the amount of seventy thousand dollars, not to exceed eighty thousand dollars for the year. Sufficient funds will be available for said contract, subject to the adoption of the twenty twenty five municipal budget and been certified by the chief financial officer. Said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that Township of Nutley renewed the contract for an additional year with Montillo Electric LLC pursuant to the previously signed agreement. I move the resolution.
Move it.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco.
Hi.
Mayor Kelly.
Hi.
Whereas Township of Nutley has a need to acquire specialized professional services as a fair and open contract pursuant to the provision. Of NJ SA nineteen colon forty four A twenty point five, and whereas Department of Parks and Public Property has determined that there is a need to acquire specialized professional services. For plumbing service and purchase, and whereas municipal clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for sealed bid for plumbing service and purchase. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey. That sealed bid should be due on Thursday, November seventh, twenty twenty four, at eleven AM. Addressed to municipal clerk, Nutley Township Hall, One Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey, at which time they will be publicly open and read. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco. Commissioner Patraco.
Hi.
Mayor Kelly.
Hi.
Whereas township has another need to acquire specialized professional services as a fair and open contract pursuant to the provision of NJ SA nineteen colon forty four A twenty point five. And whereas Department of Parks and Public Property has determined that there is a need to acquire specialized professional services for roofing services and purchase of. Supplies, and whereas municipal clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for sealed bid for roofing service and supplies. Now therefore be it resolved by Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey. That sealed bid shall be due on Thursday, November seventh, twenty twenty four, at eleven AM. Addressed to municipal clerk, Nutley Township Hall, One Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey, at which time they will be publicly open and read. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco.
Hi.
Mayor Kelly.
Hi.
Irresolvable Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that municipal clerk is hereby authorized. And directed to advertise for sealed bids for recreation uniforms and equip. Be it further resolved, sealed bids for recreation uniforms and recreation equipment shall be due on Thursday, November seventh, twenty twenty four, at eleven AM. In the commission chambers, township hall, at three PM prevailing time, at which time they will be publicly open and read. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco.
Hi.
Mayor Kelly.
Hi.
Whereas township has entered into a contract with Veridian Environmental Consultants, P O Box three zero zero nine Upper Montclair, New Jersey, for NJ DEP. Response for Glotzback Park and Tremont Place, and whereas Director of Parks and Public Property has recommended the following change order from said contract. Change order number two, NJ DEP response for Glotzback and Tremont Place in the amount of five thousand dollars. Whereas funds are available from account number G there's zero four, one eighty six, four oh three. And has been certified by the chief financial officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey. The change order number one, the amount of five thousand dollars be and is hereby approved. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco.
Hi.
Mayor Kelly.
Hi.
Be it resolved by Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law, Chapter two thirty one, Public Law nineteen seventy five. That the public meetings, the Shatri Committee for twenty twenty five will be held on the following dates. All meetings are to be held virtually via Zoom unless otherwise posted at seven thirty PM as listed. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco.
Hi.
Mayor Kelly.
Hi.
And last but not least, whereas Department of Parks and Public Property determined due to unforeseen circumstances. Families had to cancel participation in programs offered, and whereas Department of Parks and Public Property has determined a need to refund families. Now for be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey. That the treasurer be and is hereby authorized to refund payments for recreation programs in the amount listed below below. To Lynn Dynell for the Fall Festival in the amount of one hundred dollars. I move the resolution.
Move it.
Commissioner Evans.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco.
Hi.
Mayor Kelly.
Hi.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Oh, Commissioner Scarpelli, I see you don't have any resolutions on for this evening.
On tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Patraco.
Resolution authorizing. Award of non-fair and open contract for labor council, whereas the township of Nutley Department of Public Safety has the need to acquire the services. Of a labor council as non-fair and open contract pursuant of to provision provisions of NJ SA nineteen. Dash four four A dash twenty point five, and whereas the law offices of Antonelli, Cantor, and Rivera located at three fifty four Eisenhower Parkway. Suite one thousand Livingston, New Jersey, has submitted its proposal dated December first, two thousand twenty four, indicating. They provided labor council at the rate of a hundred and seventy five dollars per hour. Whereas the firm Antonelli, Cantor, and Rivera has completed business entity disclosure certification. Which certifies that the firm has not made any reportable contributions to political candidate committee in Township of Nutley in the previous one year, and that. The contract will prohibit the firm Antonelli, Cantor, and Rivera from making any reportable contributions through the term of this contract. And whereas the term of this contract is January first through December thirty first, two thousand twenty five, and may be extended as approved by this. Governing body, and whereas the contract is not to exceed seventy five thousand, whereas funds are available from account. Five dash zero one, zero twelve, two zero five, and have been certified by the chief. Financial officer, said certification being attached to this resolution, now therefore be resolved. That the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley authorizes a contract with the firm Antonelli, Cantor, and Rivera. As described hereon, and be further resolved that it business disclosure entity certification. Certification and the determination of value be placed on file with. This resolution be further resolved that the notice of this action shall be printed in Nutley Sun. In accordance with the local public contract law. I move it.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco.
Hi.
Mayor Kelly.
Hi.
Whereas NJ SA forty eight four eighty seven provides that the director of division local government. Services may approve the insertion of any special item in the budget for of any county or municipality when such items shall have. Been made available by law and that the amount thereof was not determined at the time of the adoption of the budget. And whereas the director may also approve the insertion item appropriation for equal amount and. Section one, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex, New Jersey hereby request the director of division local government services. To approve as revenue from Department of Homeland Security. Pursuant to the provisions of the statute, section two, be further resolved that like some forty one thousand five hundred sixty four dollars. And fifty four cents be and the same is hereby appropriated under the. Caption of general appropriations, appropriations excluded from caps, EM two thousand twenty two assistant firefighters grant. And other expenses, forty one thousand five hundred sixty four dollars and fifty four cents be further. Resolved that the sum of four thousand, one thousand five hundred fifty six. Excuse me, forty six cents representing the amount required for the municipality's shell share of. Aforementioned undertaken improvement appears in the budget of the year two thousand twenty four under the caption. Matching funds and hereby appropriate under a caption of assistance to firefighters grant be further resolved that the township clerk. For two certified copies of this resolution to the director of local government services. I move it.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco.
Hi.
Mayor Kelly.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have uh six resolutions on for this evening, and I'll. Try to get through them swiftly. Uh the first resolution I have on for this evening is resolution number two ninety five twenty four. Recognizing November as National Diabetes Awareness Month, and November fourteenth as World Diabetes Day. Whereas over thirty eight million Americans have diabetes and nearly ninety eight million American adults have the prediabetes, whereas. Of over the thirty eight million adults with diabetes, twenty nine point seven million were diagnosed and eight point seven million were undiagnosed. And whereas the percentage of Americans with diabetes age sixty five and older remains high at twenty nine point two percent, while one point two million new cases are diagnosed every year. And whereas the risk factors for diabetes-related complications, including smoking, obesity, physical inactivity, high blood pressure, and high cholesterol. And whereas diabetes is an epidemic in New Jersey with ten point two percent of the adult population population having been diagnosed. As whereas diabetes is expensive, Americans with diabetes have medical expenses that are higher than those who don't. Including three hundred six point six billion dollars in direct medical costs and a hundred six billion dollars and reduced productivity attributable to diabetes. Whereas we must aid efforts of improving lives, preventing diabetes, and finding a cure through diabetes-related research projects and diabetes prevention and educational grants. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey declare November. As National Diabetes Awareness Month and recognize November fourteenth as World Diabetes Day. Be it further resolved that we urge all residents to educate themselves on diabetes and how the complications can be prevented or delayed. By properly managing blood glucose, blood pressure, and cholesterol level, by eating healthy, being physically active, and to quit smoking. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco.
Hi.
Mayor Kelly.
Hi. The uh next one I have on for this evening is resolution number two ninety six twenty four. Uh designating the month of November as National Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month, and November twenty first as World Pancreatic Cancer Day. Whereas the American Cancer Society estimates for pan- estimates for pancreatic cancer in the United States for twenty twenty four include sixty six thousand four hundred and forty people. That will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer and fifty one thousand seven hundred and fifty people that will die from pancreatic cancer. Whereas the average lifetime risk of pancreatic cancer is about one in fifty six in men and one in sixty in women. Whereas some known risk factors for pancreatic cancer that you can change include tobacco use, being overweight, diabetes, or workplace exposure to certain chemicals. Whereas some known risk factors for pancreatic cancer that you cannot change include age, sex, race, family history, and inherited genes. Whereas. Known risk, to know the risk factors of pancreatic cancer and find out how pancreatic cancer is tested for diagnosed and staged. And now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey declare November as National Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. November twenty first as World Pancreatic Cancer Day, and be it further resolved that we urge all residents to take the time to learn about this devastating cancer. In the hopes to raise awareness as most people are not as knowledgeable about pancreatic cancer as breast or prostate cancer, but is just as the bill- the building, it's debilitating a disease. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco.
Hi.
Mayor Kelly.
Hi. Uh the next one I have on for this evening is resolution number two ninety seven twenty four. Uh this is designating the month of November as National Native American Heritage Month. Whereas from November first to November thirtieth, twenty twenty four, the United States celebrates National Native American Heritage Month. Whereas Native Americans are descendants of the original indigenous inhabitants of what is now the United States. Whereas the National Native American Heritage Month is an opportunity to consider and recognize the contributions of Native Americans to the history of the United States. And whereas Native Americans maintain vibrant cultures and traditions and hold a deeply rooted root, deeply rooted sense of community. And whereas Native Americans speak and preserve indigenous languages which have contributed to the English language by being used as names of individuals and locations throughout the United States. And whereas Native Americans have moving stories of tragedy, triumph, and perseverance that need to be shared with future generations. Whereas Native Americans have made distinct and important contributions to the United States. And the rest of the world in many fields, including the fields of agriculture, medicine, music, language, and art. Whereas Native Americans have distinguished themselves as inventors, entrepreneurs, spiritual leaders, and scholars. Whereas the people of the United States have reason to honor the great achievements and contributions of the native of Native Americans and their ancestors. May therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey asks the community to join them in recognizing and celebrating November as National Native American Heritage Month. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco.
Hi.
Mayor Kelly.
Hi. Uh re- resolution number two ninety eight twenty four, whereas raffle. License applications have been received from the following organizations, Nutley High School Volleyball Booster Club. License number fifty four twenty four on premise merchandise raffle for Saturday, November ninth, twenty twenty four. Whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by municipal clerk and the police department now now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey. That the aforementioned licenses are hereby approved, and the municipal clerk is authorized to issue said licenses. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco.
Hi.
Mayor Kelly.
Hi. Uh this next resolution I have is on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners, and it's uh resolution number two ninety nine twenty four. Whereas the township has a need to retain the services of a consultant who specializes in matters related to government relations and support primarily to the ongoing redevelopments of Hoppen of the Hoppen La Roche site. As a non-fair and non-open contract pursuant to the New Jersey statutes annotated night title nineteen. Uh chapter forty four, section twenty point five, and whereas the Board of Commissioners has determined that Thomas Greco Publishing LLC located two forty four Chestnut Street. Township of Nutley State of New Jersey, zero seven, one, one, zero, is best suited to provide these services to the township. And whereas Thomas Greco Publishing LLC has submitted a proposal to provide these professional services at a monthly rate of six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Whereas New Jersey Statute annotated title forty A uh colon eleven dash two and eleven five permits an award of contract without public bidding. Whereas the anticipated term of this contract is from November first, twenty twenty four, through October thirty first, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty five. And funds are available from accounts four dash zero one dash one oh two dash two hundred, four dash zero one dash two oh one dash two hundred.[1791.48] dash two hundred, four dash zero one dash three oh two dash two hundred, four dash zero one dash four oh two dash two hundred, four dash zero one dash five oh two dash two hundred. Sixteen thousand two hundred dollars per department totaling eighty one thousand dollars have been certified by the chief financial officer, said certification being attached here too. Whereas Thomas Greco Publishing has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification, which certifies that they have not made any reportable disqualifying contributions to a political or candidate committee in the township of Nutley in the previous one year, and that the contract will prohibit them from making any reportable contributions throughout the term of the contract. May therefore be resolved that the board of commissioners, township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the mayor is hereby authorized to enter into a contract with Thomas Greco Publishing LLC as a professional service. Be further resolved that a copy of this resolution, as well as the contract, shall be placed on file with the clerk of the township of Nutley, and a notice in accordance with local public contracts law of New Jersey, and a form attached here too shall be published in the nutley sun. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
And the last one I have on for this evening is resolution number three hundred twenty four. Whereas the township of Nutley has a need for services of an outside litigation counsel in reference to REMA versus Township of Nutley at AL document number ESX dash L one nine eight two dash twenty three, through a nonfair and nonopen contract as a professional service pursuant to the provisions of New Jersey statutes annotated title nineteen, chapter forty four A, twenty twenty, twenty point five, and New Jersey statutes annotated twenty, title twenty eleven, at sequence as amended. Whereas the law firm Bruno and Ferraro Esquires, three oh one, Route seventeen, North two eleven, Rutherford, New Jersey, zero seven zero seven zero, is qualified to provide these services. Whereas Bruno and Ferraro Esquires has submitted a two thousand twenty four fee schedule to provide such services at an hourly rate two hundred and fifteen dollars for legal services by attorneys and an hourly rate of a hundred dollars for services by paralegal or law clerk. And whereas the contract will not exceed fifteen thousand dollars for the period of October fifteenth, two thousand twenty fourth, through October fourteenth, two thousand twenty five. And whereas the funds are available from accounts four dash zero one dash one zero one two dash two oh five, and five dash zero one dash zero one two dash two zero five, will be certified by the chief financial officer, said certification being subject to adoption of the, of the two thousand twenty five municipal budget. Whereas the law firm Bruno and Ferraro Esquires has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification, which certifies that they have not made any reportable disqualifying contribution to a political or candidate committee in the township of Nutley in the previous one year that would violate the New Jersey statutes annotated title nineteen, chapter forty four A, twenty point five, or the township's local unit pay to play ordinance or New Jersey election law enforcement commission disclosure requirements, and now therefore be resolved that the board of commissioners of the township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, contract for outside litigation counsel as follows. A, that the mayor and township clerk are hereby authorized to direct and execute, seal, and deliver a two thousand twenty three, I think that should be two thousand twenty four, contract for professional legal services with Bruno and Ferraro pursuant to a nonfair open public process, in accordance with the New Jersey statutes annotated title nineteen, chapter forty four, Alpha, twenty point five, for the term beginning in October fifteen, two thousand twenty fourth, through October fourteen, two thousand twenty five. The stated hourly rates not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. Be a copy of this resolution, as well as the contract, and business entity disclosure certification, and business entity disclosure of campaign contributions shall be placed on file with the clerk, and C, a copy of this resolution, resolution shall be published as required by law within ten days of its passage. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
And that's all I have. At this time, we will open the meeting up to the public. If you wish to be heard at this time, please approach the microphone and state your name for the record, please.
Janice Rubel. Good evening, Mayor Kelly, Commissioner Scarpelli, Petracco, Tucci, Evans, and Mr. Bruno. Last meeting, Mayor Kelly, you had mentioned that there would be a development pertaining to this issue.
Yes, we did hear back from our rent leveling board attorney, and this is a novel area. It has some legal issues for us to navigate. On the one side, it is theoretically permissible and legal. On the other side, it's also theoretically constitutionally impermissible, which creates a significant risk of litigation for the township. And at this time, the township does not want to incur that litigation risk, especially with the, the costs going on with the school board. It's, at this time, it's not advisable. We want, we want to see the landscape be a little bit more settled and developed before we take a decision, you know, one way or the other on this. Additionally, by law landlords are entitled to a seven percent return on their investment. If they're not seeing those returns, they're, they're, they're able to come before the rent leveling board to allow them to then increase their rents beyond the statutory maximums. And if we cap it for seniors, that means their neighbors are going to have to pay more to live in the same apartment, which is unfair to them as well. And so at this time, the board of commissioners, upon the advice of council, is, is, will not be acting on the proposed resolution.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry you didn't get the response you were looking for. We did spend a lot of time looking into it, and at the ti- at this time, we want to see some more solid legal ground before we take a step one way or the other.
Good evening. Nefisori, I'm a thirty five Wall Street, Nutley, New Jersey. You understand why I'm here. It's another month, another eighteen hundred on the mortgage, taxes, insurance, legal bills. I'm just beyond drowning here. I haven't, you know, no one here has reached out to me personally, other than when I reach out to you guys, you do often respect and, you know, say something briefly. The only time someone's ever reached out to me ironically was on election day. I'm here tonight because, you know, I'm trying to keep my composure, and it's really difficult. I just received a forty seven page report from a praiser company that you guys hired. Forty seven pages, going through the property, them telling me, it's, I guess, the township wants to give me new ones on two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, they want to give me about five thousand, which was beyond absurd. Forty seven pages in this report, it states that you guys value my land that I purchased for now, I'm at, I don't know, two hundred and sixty five thousand a gallon, and at nine thousand dollars. Now, I, you know, I try to take a deep breath and not get upset about this, but Mr. Evans, all due respect, it's your department, okay? So you, you think it's appropriate that two and a half years later, that you guys do a praise on this land, but when I bought this property, you had your department, your tax assessor, who I have the utmost respect for, and I'm not here to criticize people, because I still believe, even though my lawyer doesn't, that no one did anything intentionally to hurt me. Your department dropped the ball over and over. I said last time, if this was corporate America, they would have been fired. Your tax assessor has my land assessed at eighty three thousand, ninety thousand. I was paying taxes on it for thirty seven hundred. All of a sudden, I file a lawsuit, two and a half years later, you guys, you know, changed the tax assessment on it. Now the land is worth nine thousand. My taxes should be what, a hundred bucks? But I'm still paying more than that. That forty seven page report was a slap in my face, I'm gonna be honest with you. If someone took the initiative years ago to do that, I wouldn't be sitting here right now or standing there. But because you guys were served this flood map years ago, and you shelved it, because that's what happened. You know, and it's just, you know, I'm gonna talk in circles right now, but that, that kind of brought me, it's funny, forty seven pages. Who knows what you guys spent on that? I mean, I know my legal bills, and I go, sure, yours is much as not more. You know, I'm gonna talk in circles right now, probably run out of time. I respectfully ask if you just let me talk. Over twenty years ago, I ran for city council. I ran, and everyone told me, don't run, you don't have a chance, you're not gonna win. And I ran because I noticed things through the years that I did not like what the township was doing. I, I watched people get hurt, and it bothered me. That's who I am. I served our country in army, I was in Marine Corps, I served as a fireman, I'm a special education teacher. My whole life, I've been committed to public service. When I ran, everyone said, you can't win, you want to win, don't do it. Mr. Tucci could probably attest to this, he knows back then, you had one crew and another crew, here I was all alone. Ran, had a purpose. My purpose was that I did not like to see people. And to this day, as a principal or, I don't know, a school administrator for sixteen years, I, I could bring every employee that ever worked with me to come in and speak about my character. Anyway, I ran for office, and, and I won. It was all about heart. And, you know, I'm going to talk in circles again, I apologize, but I didn't know much about politics, I was in my twenties. But I'll tell you how I worked. I didn't know about township attorney. I met this guy named Tom Murphy, didn't know I was running for office. But Tom, one day, was kind enough to treat my little son at the time, Nikki, who's thirty five now, he was probably, I don't know, ten years old, he was friends with Al de Mayo, and Tom took him over and got him donuts. So Tom and I built this friendship. But because I trusted his character, I supported him. Township manager, I don't want to really talk a lot about that, because I don't want a conflict, but Mr. Tucci could attest that when I ran for office, Mr. Kimmer was there, they publicly tried to fire him, I didn't like it. But a lot of people spoke highly about Mauro Tucci. I did not know Mauro back then, okay? But being the person I was, I've always said, you know what, I went with people's character and who they were, and I said, let Mayor Tucci, you know, let's keep him there six months and pass the torch, and, you know, we'll change things up. And that's the truth. And no one, it's, that's who I am. My character speaks for itself. Eight months ago, I was so upset at what was going on with me and how hurt I was getting. I decided to run for commissioner. Louis Otako could attest, I could fill this room up in a heartbeat. I won't do that, because it's not me against all of you. Within, within less than three weeks, a month, I had twenty six hundred petitions signed. I decided not to run. I even met and sat with Marie Hamlin. I told her, you want to win, get on my team. Never once did I ever say a negative thing about any person up here. It wasn't about you guys. It was about me, it was about what was wrong, and I want to fix. This leads me to today, what's happened to me, to me. I don't know, I would love to just hand this out, you could throw in the garbage, do what you want to, and this may be my last time here, it probably won't be, but I have no other choice. Can I hand this out real quick?
Yes.
Let council look at it. I, you know what, you could give, you already have ten copies of these. I, I cannot reiterate more what happened to me. I have fifty pieces of evidence of what transpired when I bought this property in Nutley. The first couple pages here shows you that I had discussions with the building department prior to me buying this property. I cannot emphasize enough that every person I spoke to told me that this property was legally self divided and approved for a one family house. Plain and simple. If you look at page one, February twenty second, second, two thousand twenty two, this is seven months prior to me closing on this property. It talks about, I met with Dave Barry, whatever, he explained, it's, it's, it's brief, it explains what happened. Dave is going to provide a list of things I need in order to build on this land, I know I need to meet with a town engineer, and may have to retain my own personal engineer, can you please relay this to the seller? Which I did. He didn't tell me you can't build on this property, he told me what I had to do, meet with Sal Farver. Six months before I purchased this property, I got a zoning certificate from Dave Barry. This certificate clearly says that this is an R one zone I could build on this property. That's what, that's what a zoning certificate, a CO does. It gives you permission to build on this property. It doesn't say you could buy this property, it's unbuildable, it's in a floodway, you can't build on it. It clearly says this. Dave instructed me to meet with Sal Farver and the town manager, which we did, we spoke in conference, we spoke out loud, they all explained to me what I need to do. Your township attorney that you guys paid submitted a report to, to me, Louis Otako, who's helped me build, Gottsel, my architect. The first page of your township report, your engineer, this site is in an R one residential one family zone where construction of a single family dwelling is permitted. Again, this site is in an R one residential zone where construction of a single family dwelling is permitted. This is from the people that you hired. Okay, I mean, I, I don't, I, I am dumbfounded that it's two and a half years later, and I'm still fighting with, with this township. It's clear as day. He gave me a list, he told me what I need to do to build. I was aware that this land was in a flood zone. I, I have a house down the Jersey Shore, I was aware I had to do flood elevations. He gave me this list, I went back to my architect, Mr. Gottsel, and we addressed every concern on this list, and we did it, and we resubmitted. Clear as day. I don't have one email, one message, nothing, one letter from this township that told me I need to get DEP approval. Everyone I spoke to, every single person told me this was a legal, legally subdivided property that I could build a one family. I'm gonna be a little more brief. So that's the pioner role. Your engineer that wrote the report wrong, and I had Mr. Barry saying, yeah, he messed up, he wrote the report wrong. At the end, the next page, September twenty ninth, Nick in Louisville, I met with Sal and our township engineer this morning, they will be releasing a review, a review letter, which I already had, to let you guys, to you guys shortly. I know you have submitted a footing and foundation permit for now. Can you start to file the rest of your permits while you're waiting for the letter from the engineer? The engineer told me I could build on this property. This is from your building construction official telling me to move forward on this project. He didn't tell me I can't build on it, he didn't say nickels and flow, I know Dave Barry. He's telling me you could build on this property. It's clear as day. These are emails from your township. It doesn't get any clearer. And I try not to get, let my emotions get the best of me, but this is beyond sad and frustrating that I'm fighting this battle for two and a half years. Antidactybeazi, if you're familiar, when you build, you have to go to Shore of Conservation and fill out a permit. I did, I paid for it. You don't do all this stuff if you can't build on a piece of property. No one in the township is going to tell me to do X, Y, and Z when they know this property is in floodway and unbuildable. It's clear, it's day, that everyone here led me to, not believe, that made me go forward to all the paperwork to build on this property, only to be told a month later, oops, we made a mistake, this is a floodway, you can't build on this property. What are you talking about, I can't build? I just spent, I got a loan on the property I'm paying, I spent, one of you think I'm filthy rich, I heard that through the grapevine, which is not true, I work hard, I've always worked two jobs. I'm not, don't let Facebook make you think I'm rich, I just enjoy my life. I'm not a builder, yeah, flip the house here and there, I'm not a builder. It, it's clear as day that this township led me down a road that was wrong. I don't want to stay incompetent, because everyone there I know, and I think or thought I had a relationship with them, they all made a mistake. And I don't know why this township is fighting me on this. I would never, if I sat in that chair, this would never happen on my watch, I'm sorry. And I may be sitting in that chair one day, it would never happen on my watch as a commissioner. I would speak to my colleagues and said, let's fix what's wrong, let's do what we tell the people we're gonna do when we run for commission. Let's do what's the best interest for the people in Nutley. Not all the people, not one person, but let's, let's make the decisions that people may not appreciate. I just wish you would end this nightmare for me. I got two children in college, I got one that got married, I mean, it, it's, you know, it's tough. And every month, I pay this stupid freaking high interest loan that I don't want to default on, because I'm fifty five, and I don't want to screw up my credit, I don't want to lean on my house, but sooner or later, I'm gonna default on it. And what bothers me most is, I'm going to go to trial, and I'm going to prevail, and when I do, I'm going to be, I don't want someone come up to me saying, oh, good job, Nick, you, you know, it worked out for you. No, now's the time to fix my problems. I send a settlement letter to all of you saying, I'm willing to lose 150,000 of my money. Just buy the property for what I owe the bank. I don't want to pay the bank no more. I just don't get it.
Can you wrap this up in about a minute?
Yes, I'm gonna, I have Lou Lou Retaco and Carl Lord I speak real quick. And I'm just gonna sum up when I'm done.
Good evening, commissioners. Congratulations, Mayor. Everything he said is facts. I mean, it's just the truth. So I don't know why anything other than you guys buying the property would happen. Why, 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 why would it go to court?
So I do appreciate you bringing this, these documents to our attention. It's something that we will certainly review with, with counsel. And I know personally, I have the discovery on my desk and I'm going through it myself. I have not yet seen the 47-page report. I imagine that was done at the request of counsel by a third party. And believing, I don't think you're lying. I don't think anyone else on this board thinks you're lying or you're, you have, you lack of character or any of that. You know, we all feel for you. We feel this is an unfortunate situation. But as I said last time, once these kind of things enter into litigation, it, it takes time. And I know it's time that you don't have. And it's unfortunate for someone who's, doesn't do a lot of litigation, it's kind of shocking how slow these things crawl. But for me, I'm an attorney and, you know, I'm accustomed to the pace of litigation. And so we'll do what we can to try and speed the process along. But, you know, I'm going to defer to our counsel on this. We're going to have to discuss more in closed session.
I would hate to have to testify on his behalf. I would hate to have to do that because it's all true. There's no reason to testify. The permits were taken by the office and stamped. That means go, do what you got to do. Build that house.
Well, I seen Dave a half dozen times. I waited for Sal three or four times. I met with him twice.
Fortunately, the matter isn't sued. The entire board, I know, sympathizes with the situation out there. Would anybody be able to throw for you on this?
I don't think they would advise because if you hurt a guy like him, nobody's safe in this town. Nobody. He's a guy that you don't hurt.
This was a lawsuit that.
It shouldn't have been a lawsuit. It should have been settled.
It doesn't work then.
It does sometimes. It does.
I'll be brief, gentlemen. Carl Lord I, broker, next P. Reilly in Nutley. I represented Mr. Oriama on the sale of this property at 14 Homer. And I want to testify that I personally went to the town code department and spoke with the head. Saying, is this property subdivided and ready to build? And I was told, yes. I said, we're going to get a CO? Yes. He said, but it's in flood zone. I said, fine. And he said, well, happens, I have a engineering report right here. See this separate report? We're going to have to get this done for that property too. So tell Mr. Oriama to call me. He goes, we're friends. We know each other. So great. I texted Mr. Oriama, I said, please meet with Dave because we have a little extra step to do to meet the codes because obviously you have to have the flood gates and, you know, you can't build a basement. We know all that. So as a professional and built a wheelchair in this town for 23 years, dealing with Dave, which he's a great guy and the whole department, all you guys, I know you all personally, professionally and on a personal level, that to understand that this is an issue, that someone made a mistake. In my professional business, I have E and O insurance. I make a mistake, whether I do it on purpose or not, someone makes a claim, they get paid. This is obvious. Someone made a mistake that they did not properly put into the records that this was a different type of flood situation and it wasn't buildable. That shouldn't be Mr. Oriama's burden. And you gentlemen, it's not your burden if someone made a mistake and doing, has insurances. So why this got to litigation is hard for me to understand, but I'm here just to testify that we did our due diligence. I would have never let my client buy that property.
Talking about, and this isn't the forum to litigate this, but those records that you're talking about are public records, right? The flood maps are public records.
Yes, but they weren't available at that point when we were doing it. They came after the fact. Okay, well then, no one in the town told us to look at further into what it is. So thank you.
If I just sum everything up, that's a cop out, that the things are available. You have hired professionals that work for your, for your township. You have, I know, because it's not your $270,000. Okay, I know. But you stand here and then trust me, your attitude would be totally different. And I don't want disrespecting you. You've been nothing respectful. I'm angry. I'm upset rightfully so. Again, David Gottsel, Louis Retaco, myself, Carl Lord I, you have four individuals that went to the town and all four were told the same thing, that this lot's legally to build on. I mean, I didn't, if it wasn't told that, then yeah, I wouldn't be here right now. I don't understand. Here's your people that you hired. So I'm going to sum this up again. I'm going to plead with you once again. I'm going to put it on Al and Mauro. I'm going to ask you to please make a motion to purchase this land for my settlement offer, just pay the, pay the bank off and keep it, make it a pocket park. You guys purchased land before. What's the difference? I mean, obviously you're not doing me a favor because if people think you're playing favoritism, I wouldn't be here two and a half years later. This would have been done when I went to see Mr. Tucci. So listen, I got a problem. I went to him, you know, asked the mayor at the time as a friend. I'm going to ask you now, can you make a motion to purchase this? And maybe Mauro second it.
We already, I already tried to do that.
You can do it right now, Al. It's simple.
Cannot do it. And if you were on the board, you know that I would do it for you. And let me talk, let me talk over me, Nick, please. I'm in your corner at 1,000%. I feel horrible about the situation. But just like when you're a lawyer, when you're on the board and Valvolte tells you, you can't do some, I can't do it. So it's not anything about our friendship. I know Louis and Carl well. My heart bleeds for you. When there's a suit in place, I'm not allowed to do it. I just want to be clear. And I am, and I can't. Can I do it, John?
Yes, he advises you not to.
You're not going to like what we would buy for. We just had an appraisal. That's what we would be constrained to buy.
Appraisal. Two and a half years you do an appraisal on a property. It should have been appraised two and a half years sooner. I don't, once again, yeah, coming here is useless. Al, he advised you not to. You are an elected official that I've supported through the years and trusted in. It's real simple. I make a motion to purchase this property and we'll use it as a pocket park. Real simple. I second it. End this nightmare.
Nick, please. First of all, you are a friend and I want to run a friendship over.
No, I'm not going.
If you have a police and fire issue, I would be glad to help you. This isn't even.
Mr. Evans, I'm respecting this. Make a, make a motion. Do the right thing.
Mr. Oriama, I will not comment in this form.
You're a commissioner. You can comment all you want.
Let me give you one point of advice. How well do you know Commissioner Petracco?
I know him fairly well, really well.
Do you know Commissioner Tucci?
I know him really well.
How well do you know Commissioner Scarpelli?
Extremely well, all of them.
You are putting them in a position where on this matter, because of relationship, they must recuse themselves from this matter.
You're, you don't understand the law as elected official then. I disagree respectfully.
And I'm advising you, you're putting them in a position where they must recuse themselves.
They don't, you want, I am a citizen of this way. I am, I am a citizen of the township. I know Mr. Bruno. I know his grandfather. I know here the people in Jersey. It's just by faces. I, I'm a citizen right now.
You are arguing, you are arguing a settlement of a legal case before the public.
I'm asking to purchase this property. I'm asking the township, do you like to purchase this property?
Mr. Oriama, you just gave us a whole bunch of new documents. This is.
Anytime you get the documents, I've given.
I mean, this is the first time I'm seeing it. So we're going to have to review it with counsel. Like I said, these things take time. No one's trying to drag this on any longer than it needs to be. And we're trying to move this as quick as we can.
Again, I wish someone, Joe, Mr. Scarpelli, do you ever have any permits? I mean, I, I, listen, I respect you and.
Mr. Oriama, I think that Mr. Bruno summed this up. We all feel for you. We, but we are in a position where we represent everybody in the township. And we have to do what we have to do in according to the law and according to what our attorney puts us in the position. So we don't put ourselves at risk. And I hope you understand that.
I do. And on a final note, all of you knew Chicalini and you all bought his property. It wasn't a conflict then, was it, Mr. Evans? Everyone knows Chicalini. Did you say, Mr. Chicaline, we can't buy your property because we know you? Come on, this is the township. But I know you and I don't even know you. You know of me. I don't even know you. So we all know each other. I'm here as a citizen trying to unload a property that was condemned by this township. That's all I'm doing. Again, make a motion, buy this property, end this nightmare. Because when I go to trial and I prevail, the shame on all of you. I'm sorry. And I'll never disrespect any of you. I mean, I want to scream. I don't want to come off as being disrespectful. And Mr. Evans, you're the commissioner. You don't think no one should be scolded for this in your department? You think this is fine what they did? You think this is appropriate?
I will not comment.
Thank you. And again, I don't mean to sound hostile, but I'm sorry. I will be up there one day and I swear to God, I will never be dictated by a township attorney. I don't mean that disrespectfully. But he works for you. You don't work for him. And I would make a motion right now. I make a motion to buy and end this nightmare for this kid that we all know that served this country and served this community. It's that simple. And you know, and you know, I wouldn't hesitate to do it.
Thank you. And you both get a chance to speak. Whoever wants to go first.
Hi, commissioners. I am Ms. Pettif. I am Patty Little from Nutley. Mayor Kelly, I was listening to your response to Ms. Rubel. And truthfully, I didn't understand most of it. Would you be able to put that in writing to her? I'm one of her supporters.
Yes, if you want to give your contact information to the clerk, I'd be happy to explain that in, in, in writing to you.
Okay, because when daddy says no, we go to grandma, right?
We need your address for the record.
Oh, my address?
No, you don't have to put it on the record. You could just give it to the clerk.
Okay, so that's.
Just, okay. Public comment with your name and.
Thank you for listening. Do not listen. I will. Thank you for listening because this, it's been such a long process that we've been going through. Appreciate that you gave her the information tonight, but I didn't understand it. So thank you.
Yeah.
That's it. That's, that's all I want.
Yeah, I'm sorry it wasn't the, the information. It's, it's just, it's unsettled right now and it puts risk on us that we're not in a position to take right now where other towns may be able to take that risk and settle the landscape for us and we can revisit it in the future.
Well, my mom always said, if daddy says no, go to grandma. We'll be back.
Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Patty. Patty, thank you again for your keepsake.
Hi, first, I want to thank you guys for your patience because I'm really not a good public speaker. So I'm here tonight because I wrote you all an email on.
I'm sorry. Can you just state your name for the record, please?
Yes, thank you. Sorry. My name is Elise Worschowski and I live here in town. I'm here tonight because I wrote you all an email on October 3rd that went unanswered about the townwide movie night. So I wanted to read it here so it went on public record and maybe I would get a response. Last year, because of the advocacy of a few parents, the Board of Ed and Superintendent Bagna, Nutley took a significant step towards inclusivity by introducing no homework nights on a district level for some Jewish holidays and many other religious observances. This showed a recognition by the school district of our community's diversity and provides much-needed support for students celebrating non-Christian holidays. And hopefully a step towards not scheduling district-wide tests and other important events on the first day of school. However, I was disappointed to see a recent town event scheduled on one of these no homework nights, unintentionally excluding Jewish families observing Rosh Hashanah. The flyer's message, "Community is about doing something together that makes belonging matter", felt particularly hurtful and made me feel even more unwelcome. If Nutley truly values inclusivity and diversity, we must be mindful of scheduling events that respect every family's needs. This one really particularly hit home for me since I've worked for the last four years to organize an event just like this for the Yantakah School with the expressed intention of fostering connection and creating memories. However, I had to explain to my three children that they could not go to this movie night because the town didn't know that it was our most important holiday. I love this town and I've always felt supported when seeking help. However, it's puzzling when the township overlooks the diversity that it represents. I understand that keeping track of everybody's holidays is challenging. But then why was a diversity council created and why wasn't it consulted when planning the calendar? I know there's a learning curve. However, scheduling movie night on the second night of Yom Kippur and the second movie night with, on the homework, the second movie night on the homework night meant for Dwali does not recognize the diversity that I've grown to love here in Nutley. Townwide inclusivity and recognition of the diversity should not lay on the backs of a few advocates. It should be the responsibility of our elected officials and the committees that were set in place to ensure that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do apologize to anyone, everyone who wrote to me regarding the movie night. I did try to, I thought I responded to all the concerns. And I apologize if I missed your email. We understood, or my department understands that, you know, the no homework night, the impetus behind that was the Jewish holiday, but we are a secular town. And it's a, billed as a family night. And we as a town have to cater to all residents regardless of race, creed, ethnicity. Everyone's invited to the town events. No one's intended to be excluded. And it, I'm proud to be part of a town where we're able to recognize that Jewish students need to be with their families on an important holiday, on a family night, and their, their families are able to come together. But there's also many people in this town who come from broken families and don't have the, the same type of family structure that you and I may have. Going to school and doing homework is sometimes the best part of their day. And on a, a night for families, when people might not have the best family life, we as a town opted to provide an outlet for people to come together and celebrate on a family night.
I do appreciate that, but every single one of these no homework nights was created on somebody's religious holiday. And it was created for a reason because of advocacy of parents trying to push this town to recognize the diversity that is here.
Right.
And it's one thing to set up a diversity council, but to not have the diversity council actually implement any kind of policies that help represent and make the diversity of this town feel included feels like a missed opportunity.
I, I understand that, but like I said, we have to represent the entire town. We're a secular town. We can't observe.
Take all for other holidays that are recognized. I'm not asking to take all for holidays. I'm asking to not host townwide events that specifically say fostering, doing something together that makes belonging matter. How does that make people feel like they belong?
The town observes federal holidays.
Okay.
Elise, you know, I, I think we apologize for any way you may have felt that you were excluded from that event. I think we understand in reading your email, the way you felt. And I, and I think it was an oversight on our part. And, you know, I, I think we should plan to do better in the future. So I want you to know that, you know, the, the board feels that way and we understand and, you know, it, maybe it was a missed opportunity on our part. So.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I, if I could just make a quick comment too. I could see how heartfelt that is for you. My heart is bleeding up here because you are so passionate. And I am a little in the dark about this. Unfortunately, I don't read every email because I get like 300 a day and I apologize for missing it. However, you know what Nutley does great? All of the commissioners, you know, instead of going back and forth, if we could work towards a solution, that would be, you know, my pleasure. And I know that, you know, the gentleman that I serve with here, you know, is, is, I think it would be better because I would never want anybody to feel slighted and especially, especially a mom.
Thank you. And I appreciate that. Thank you. And I appreciate that. What's frustrating for me is the solution that's happened on the board of education level is that we have one parent now who writes them every year and informs them of the holidays that they need to be sensitive to. And that does not seem like a sustainable solution. The sustainable solution is having something like a diversity council, something that will be here long beyond my children and long beyond me.
Are you on, are you on that council?
I am not. I have no idea who's on that council, but I don't know what they do, if not point out these things to the council.
Yes, so we do observe cultural holidays, but like I said, we, as a township, we have to toe a very fine line with the constitution. There's separation of church and state. And we have to be cognizant, you know, like Dwali is also a religious holiday. You mentioned Dwali. We have to, we have to toe a very fine line so as not to observe.
Do respect. I do appreciate that, but when you tell me that and my children come home every year with Christmas ornaments from school, it's hard for me to hear that. I do appreciate that and I understand there is separation of church and state and it's one of the things I love about this country. And I'm not asking to take Christmas out of school. I love Christmas. I love Christmas ornaments, but when you throw that line back at me as a reason why you can't at least not respect other people's holidays, it feels, it feels empty.
So I'd just like to add a comment, just a simple comment. I won't repeat what Commissioner Scarpelli said because I actually think he said it quite well.
I think he did too. Thank you.
We will, I promise my word, right, for me. I have been associated with diversity, inclusion from race, from gender, from all aspects for many, many years. I, after all I've been through, I still don't feel that I am comfortable enough that I can make a decision right every time. And that when we do make a mistake, we just own up to it and do better. And I promise you we'll do better.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
If I might, before you sit down, at the risk of being redundant, all right, I do apologize for that. I know it was not intentional. I know it doesn't make it any less hurtful. And anytime a child is hurt or a family is hurt, it hurts all of us and it hurts our community. And we do recognize that. We will do better.
Thank you.
We will do better in the future.
I appreciate that.
Yes, and I've concluded most, if not all, of my emails. You know, my door is always open. I'm happy to have a conversation and we can work on solutions together for, you know, to prevent situations like this from happening. So my door is always open. I'm welcome to have a more in-depth conversation with you at any time. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I think we have a need for executive sessions.
We do, Mayor. Contract negotiations and litigation.
I'll entertain a motion for executive.
Second.
Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances. Whereas the public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances exist. And whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex and State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session and are therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley Movement to close executive session to discuss litigation, attorney-client privileged contract negotiations. Be a further result that at a time when such discussions may be disclosed to the public shall be when and such disclosures may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley pending and/or anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters within the exceptions provided for by statute. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco?
I think.
Mayor Kelly?
Hi. We have no more business on for this evening. I apologize. I will not be here at the next meeting. I'm going on my honeymoon. I didn't realize. I didn't probably look at the calendar. I thought we had a Tuesday meeting, but I'm flying out on Thursday and we have a Thursday meeting. And so I apologize for not being here, but I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli. Commissioner Patraco. Mayor Kelly.
Hi.
The time is 8:40.